Morning. I'd like to welcome you to the legislature meeting and ask you to join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The first task is to approve the minutes of the April 4th, 2020 meeting. Twenty twenty-two meeting. Okay, so I do a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, so we're dealing with the executive session that was held April 4th. And we've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, and next up is our approval of claims.
Chair, a motion to approve claims for today?
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve all claims as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. And with that, and with one minute to spare, we'll call on our clerk, Sheriff Delbert. And I had to take my, because I thought it said Lions Club contract. And I thought, wonder why you're coming to us.
It does. This is our, yeah, this is the bi-annual contract that you have to sign for us to have them move our voting equipment for election day. So I have the original.
Okay, so they come in and help out by picking up all of them?
They pick up all the locations, six different trucks. And then they take it to the six, well, five, five locations. And then they go back the same night and bring it back to us.
Do they, where do they come back to?
Come back to the museum.
Yeah. So they're locked away down there for what, what?
After the primary, they're down there for probably two weeks or so. Depends on how quickly I can get them back to the storage room, which is another topic that I'll be bringing back to you. So far, we've spent five and a half hours moving equipment from the basement to get it ready for the election. And it's, we're, we have to, you know, it's conducive on weather. If we do it after courthouse hours, obviously, we don't have the trouble of waiting on the elevator. But five and a half, and there's still stuff in the basement that we have not brought up yet. So I have a quote for a room to be built in the museum to house the equipment. It's like a caged-in area. It's, it's the same company that did the cages in the basement. And it's, if I'm remembering correctly, it's under $5,000 to have that space.
Change my, just change my?
With the top, it has to have a top on it. And it does, the quote does have a top.
Cage or like the?
In the back corner of the, of the museum, it would be the northeast corner. And I believe the, they gave me a different, couple different quotes. Yeah, kind of like right, yeah.
Total?
Yeah, it was, it was under $5,000. And it was like a 10 by 11-foot room.
Total, plenty?
Yes, total, oh, sorry, I thought you meant TOT.
Is that, are we able to move in the camera?
Our camera is not hooked, yes. Now Keith would be moving that for us to just, it wouldn't be covering the entire museum because we have to maintain the integrity of voting. So the camera would be put, positioned on the north side somehow. I don't know how Keith was going to do it. But it would just be pointing at the fixed area itself. So that, and he said that would be very easy for him to be able to move, so.
Long as we think the motion through the contract.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I, I'm sorry.
Sure, sure. You just made a motion to approve the Lions Club contract here, right? To move the voting machine. And Lauren seconded, so then I recall for a vote. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That just passes around you.
I've got the original.
Oh, okay.
And then the, and then the only other thing was, you just need to approve, I, not sure this has ever been done in the past. I'm not sure if that's a different law change. But it's something that you have to sign for our voting locations. The early voting locations.
That's something we've done every year.
The early ones? Okay. So again, that's, that, the locations have not changed in the last multiple years. And it's just for the voting locations. It does not cover Election Day.
Do you have one for Election Day? That's the one that we've always done.
I'll see, looks like this one, not Election Day.
Well, it's probably because you mentioned voting centers, but we've always done.
That could be, that could be, because it was vote centers.
Right.
Early voting locations.
Those are just for the upcoming two Saturdays.
You used to do, you know, around Robert voting thing. That's where some, some of the other small communities got to vote earlier. They don't do that anymore.
Well, anyone could go to any of those locations. You mean, well, that's when we had nineteen precincts, nineteen locations.
Well, there was at least one election, I remember, since then, when we, I'm thinking in terms of my home in Cutler. We lost our voting in Cutler.
Correct.
Rich. We had, we had a township trustee who was a hundred years old. Wonderful guy, Democrat trustee. He came to me and he said, I've never voted in my life. He said, I didn't vote in Cutler, and you moved it on me.
Yeah.
And I can't help but think, anyway, we did vote at the church, early voting, one time after that. And then that stopped. It wasn't the regular voting day, it was an early voting day.
Okay, so that had to have been prior to 2012.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah. Okay, so this is just it. We got Burley, or we got Deer Creek and the community center. Camden, is that right?
That's right.
It's, yeah, it's a Camden address.
Oh, so this is Deer Creek Township, this is Deer Creek, Deer Creek.
Yep.
Okay. Burrows, Flora, Delphi, Burlington, Flora, Yuman, and Delphi. These are the two Saturdays of April 23rd and April 30th.
Correct.
Well, that's not very far away, isn't it, to start moving? Okay, you made a motion on this, and you made a second to approve these. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
I'll, I'll bring it, please. I think we signed two of those others anyway, so. That way.
You'll bring the original Lions back. Do you want to copy that?
I think they signed two.
Oh, oh, okay.
Do you have the original?
I have the original here.
Change this.
You only have one of these.
Right.
That's not my copy.
We got another copy that's signed. Anything else to bring before us?
Not today?
You said that's a nine by 11?
I believe the, I got different quotes. I got different, I believe the last one was that, which is the same size as the room downstairs, the 10 by 11.
Not a very big room.
Voting machines, are they all out?
The actual voting machines, we have 40. The pole books, like what we sign in on, we have 12. And then the DS 200, which is our tapulators, we have eight. And those would not have to go in the upstairs room. I'm just trying to get the electronic equipment in there. And then the rest of it can go in our cage downstairs. It's not difficult to bring up eight things. It's difficult to bring up 40, and 12, and eight, and then all the big, like, storage units that are on wheels.
Not have to stay, find a control, two.
One per trip. I'm sorry.
Not have to stay, find a control, two in the museum.
It's better than what it's in right now. Right now, it's right under the boiler. And that room has flooded three times since 2020. And it is so hot in there in the summer that our.
Boiler's over there.
Well, the.
The main pipe.
The pipe, sorry, the main pipe, thank you. But, but, I mean, the company has even spoken to say that we are storing their equipment wrong. And after next year, it becomes ours. So if there's any issues with it, we've spent a quarter of a million dollars, and it could be junk, so.
Hope by the time we get a fix, we're in, have no one to do it, works every time.
Maybe.
Every time? Oh, you pay it off, you own them, guess what? You need to.
Okay, so let's, thank you, Sheriff, for the mic.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, I'm Mike.
Okay, the continuity of operations plans, something that we've been working on for a while. I think I finally got it to where the essential functions, it's going to be easy for me to write it. I gave you, everyone of you should have a copy of it. It's a fill-in-the-blip. And the reason why this plan's important, if we ever have to, if there's ever a disaster in this area, that we have to move and get the essential functions determined, we have to have a plan, that will get these essential functions up and moving again. Generally, within 12 hours is what you want. And they need to be able to sustain themselves for at least 30 days. So that's the purpose of this plan. So the, some of the essential functions would be like the auditor's office, my office, clerk, assessor, treasurer. But I, I will also, EMS is also an essential function, Sheriff's Department. They'll all have to write these plans, and then I, they'll get it back to me, and then I'll just make one large one that will, that then enters the emergency operations plan.
So you, you may have here the plan for your office.
All office.
Or just all office?
That is, that is a blank plan. So where it says, like, organizational name, they put in their name.
I noticed too.
But like, when you go back in, a little ways, some of the examples, I, like, web ELC and stuff like that, is stuff that I wouldn't need in mine. So I've shown him some examples of stuff like in my office that I wouldn't need. Like Auditor Myers, there's different programs that she needs. So she would have to have those listed in there instead of mine.
So we need us to approve this then today?
I need you guys to give me the authority again to send this out to one city mission essential.
And you're going to meet with each one of them?
I, if they need help. I mean, hopefully, they, it's pretty self-explanatory that they can get it done. But I will meet with each one of them if they need assistance.
A lot of them are.
Yeah, they're a lot fill-in-the-blip.
But a lot of it's the same thing. The organizational name is the same thing. You know, Auditor, you know, Auditor's office. All she has to do is go in and up in the right corner of the spreadsheet, click Find and Replace, and wherever it says organization's name, she puts Auditor's Office, replaces it with Auditor's Office, hit Replace, and it'll do 47 replacements. She doesn't have to go in and do each one. So I have tried to make it as simple as I can for everybody. Um, I'd like it by the beginning of June. That gives them a month and a half.
I want to make a motion, I'll write it up, just to distribute this out together. Go on.
I will, I will say that when we were doing our annual report, this was brought up because I had to answer, get to know what our hat is. So this is something, this is, that we really do need.
Can you say it? Who I call for vote? Thanks for providing this for everybody. Just, it was really a monumental task for each one of them to do. Each one of them did it separately, and they found a way to make it together, it was a deal.
Well, the first one I did that we sent out, there was a lot more of it. And I got the shoulder shrug from a bunch of people. So I've really tried to narrow it down and make it as simple as I can.
Well, okay, let's take that for example here. She was, she's going to have to say, in her continuity of operations plan, courthouse was mapped out, the first year of opening up office that.
That's what, that's a, and we, we can discuss that, you know? It could be, if Flora is still standing, you know, that we might have to enter into an agreement with the town of Flora if we can use some of their office spaces in their building. We could look at the 4-H, the vet center. That's, you know, going back into some type of, I know that was a county building where we leased it to, I don't remember how that whole thing went down. Lease it back from them and set up shop in there for a period of time. But when we're setting up shop in areas like that, she's not going to be able to have her whole office in there because you're not going to have, you know, room for everyone. So there's a hierarchy tree or a work schedule that she can also make out, saying on this day, be her and so-and-so, and on the second day, it's so-and-so, so-and-so. You know, they can hold many schedules. However, those offices determine, they want to make sure that they're getting that work done.
What about telephones? How do you get enough telephones?
Um, that's always going to be an issue. It'd be nice if.
You know, all that, the computer hookups to access.
That's, well, one of the things I'm looking at doing on this grant is giving a communications trailer, which we would be able to get more internet hookups on that. As far as the cell phones or the phone lines, hopefully, there, we can look at getting Frontier to work with us on that. I hate entering into a contract on something like that and never have to use it. That's why I think it's beneficial for certain elected offices to have a cellphone. Especially the mission essential offices, to have a county issue cellphone, where if we had two ditty out from here, they, there's still a phone line. Like, I have a county cellphone, so if my office had to go, people can still get over me. But nine times out of ten, I can call my cellphone.
Plus, you still have to work from home. I mean, a lot of people do some of the work from home, but you still have to have an office for the public to go to.
Right.
Cell phones are a bad answer.
Eric, that's one way to do that. With this communications trailer, I mean, I'm bringing in an extra four phone lines to everybody. It's, you know, it's, it might be enough, it might not. But if Delphi got flattened, the communications priority is going to be nine-one-one. And that, so that will end up going in there. But I'm working with this, they go on another angle on that.
I think it's, it's good to be thinking of this, running ahead, because you never know what's.
Right. Unfortunately, that's my job. I got to think of all the bad things that can happen to the county and figure out a way to mitigate the issues.
So how long does this plan do for?
It gets reviewed every year, just like.
Positions change every person?
Yep, so if the clerk changes, or she changes some personnel, then they update it. Or if some of the Indiana codes change, then they can update the codes that are within there that they have to follow.
There shouldn't be names in there, probably be positions.
Well, this, this isn't released to the public. This plan itself is not released to.
No, what I mean is then, that same position will still do the same.
Well, within that position, there's phone numbers that are associated in there. So if you're put in a position.
But positions would be the same. I got you. Not everybody's going to want to be used there, so. And we're not going to get that many cell phones, I'll tell you, you know?
Not every department in the county is an essential function.
Right, but.
There's what, four of them?
So I'm not going to say.
You use, and you can make more of them if you want to. Definitely the auditor, the clerk, the health department, mine, the treasurer, EMS, sheriff's office, transportation. We don't have water infrastructure in the county, so that's where we consider, we can't issue.
We got about seven, right?
About seven.
Well, actually, the governor had already said that the recorder was essential. So she was, and the assessor, we can't do anything without the assessor for the land contracts and stuff.
So let's just say, the court, so everybody in the courthouse, all the officers in the courthouse. And then transportation, EMS, and sheriff.
A lot of them already have the phone, so we only need probably four, maybe three or four.
As far as the elected ones, I don't.
The office does not have cell phones.
The elected offices, I don't know who has them. The courts do, I believe, the prosecutor does, I think.
Judges, prosecutors, prosecutors.
Sir, very good.
Does Highway Department have a cellphone? Do you, all right?
I care, I've got one.
He has, he's pegging back.
Help, label's in your.
Has one.
Was it? I don't know, every time I got a phone call, it was a sugar, it came up her name.
Well, she might use her own, but like, you better manage that one.
Okay.
You, like, you want to keep a phone.
Good. I have a motion and a second to authorize this to be distributed to all. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thanks for your work, Eric.
Yeah, thank you. And we're down to our next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to recommend a award of the HNA materials we did that we had last meeting. I provided a bid sheet. You'll get a copy of that. And it's highlighting which items. Okay, we have. Okay. I'll, I have it in list form also, I can just read the contractor, what was awarded. Milestone contractors, and well, I would recommend the, the equipment rental of distributor without operator, grader without operator, eight-foot asphalt paper without operator, and ten-foot asphalt paper without operator. And then another bunch that, again, without operator. Backhoe, scrape for 613, an excavator large, excavator medium, excavator small, dodo medium, dodo small, rubber tire loader, wheel tractor, static roller, roller fiber turret for asphalt, roller fiber turret for dirt, a rover sheep's foot, 815, a little boy tractor and trailer, water truck, single axle flat foot, walk hand, concrete saw, air professor attachments, anti-attackments, materials, big spear, pickup truck, power boom, side paper, and backhoe sweeper truck. And then they also applied the waiver. So I recommend awarding a laborer, operator, teamster, carpenter, mechanic, foreman, and superintendent, all two milestone, also hourly superintendent. And they had one material, HNA nine-and-a-half millimeter surface, type B. I'd award that to them. Then going down to asphalt materials, we have liquid betuminous materials for steel coating, 890. And we put betuminous materials for steel coating, 890S. Reis quietly, I would recommend get award, HNA number five base, HNA number eight binder, HNA number nine binder, HNA number nine surface, and HNA number eleven surface. And then for central paving, I'd recommend award distributor without, with operator, steel wheeled loader with operator, front end loader without operator, road wider with operator, sub-propelled chip spreader with box, box with operator, tandem dump truck without operator, asphalt paper with operator, liquid dust control, HNA 25-millimeter base, HNA 19-millimeter intermediate, HNA number nine surface airport, HNA number 11 surface virgin, and some are wood, called patch mix. And that's all the awards for the asphalt materials regulation.
Why is it short?
I do. Yeah, it's easier to follow, and with the highlights, you can tell who's getting it. And then I'd like to also recommend award to the highway site electrical heater block installation project. We got three bids. I'd like to recommend award to Rodale Electric, who was the most invested, of $10,920.
About a third of what I'm.
Correct. Uh, Rodale, is that in my cell?
My cell. I'll make a motion, please do both, two minutes. I have a motion and a second to approve all as presented, including the elect report. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, sir.
What question, Tom?
Okay.
Uh-oh.
Yeah?
Can't get away that quick.
Hey, tribe, have you talked to them up there at Arbenacre?
I called and all I got was an answering machine message, couldn't leave, I couldn't leave a message. But they're planning to open summer of twenty twenty two to the public.
Just open?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I spoke to them, they don't have any major construction.
Okay. So once, once we get our chicken seal program built, we can get that going.
We do that with you. Okay, and the one down on County Line Road.
Eight hundred south?
Yes, eight hundred south, the one mile piece in there, between one hundred and two hundred east.
Okay, uh, the, the gravel section starts at two hundred and goes to five hundred, so there's a three mile section.
But all we voted on was the one mile section.
Okay. And, and again, they are running that with the detour, that's for state with twenty-six, they've got that section closed, so a lot of traffic is running. So I, I'd recommend wait until they're done with their construction for this season and then I'll get it going.
Well, what if they get done with it, is that section running while we're still, this year, ships are, should we go ahead?
If we're still ships in, yeah, I would, if not, I'd recommend wait until next year.
Is that all right, guys?
Well, if you're chipping so, it's a fair enough.
Keep it breathing? Oh, yes. During the detour, we usually have a greater down all the time. Or pretty likely.
If people wanna go to the winery, they'll go to the winery, doesn't matter the space or.
Well, no, this is a different.
Yeah, we're talking about down.
Oh, damn.
Down southward.
They're on opposite ends of the county. Well, the wiring one came up because when we changed the zoning laws, so they could do that.
Yeah.
And there was a gentleman down here who was not connected with it all, said, well, you ought to do something about the road. Business stuff there, and so we voted on that thing, and I'd like to do that.
Um, the miles eight hundred south.
So maybe.
Number two hundred.
And eight forty is on twenty thousand mile?
Um, it's twenty-five thousand mile for now.
For now?
For, for a double layer. It, it was twenty thousand last year, now it's twenty-five.
I, I would adjust on that, I think, I, I'll give kids word on it, because I'm pretty sure it's a good truck.
I just don't wanna forget.
Right, it's on my list, I won't forget.
Okay, and you are gonna go ahead and do the wiring?
I will.
Okay, uh, is there any progress being made on the higher painter, painting stripes on the roof?
Not yet, I haven't put that out yet, I was waiting for our paving projects to the community crossings funded, once we know what's gonna be funded, I can finalize that striping list.
Now, do we pay for our community crossing road or?
Uh, not the striping, I, I don't have that cleared, so that we can do ourselves.
What do you think, just off top here, what do you think it would cost to just do that section, eight nine thousand? Or somebody come in and do that?
For what section?
Pay to that section? Do the striping?
Right, right now, I've got a whole, a bunch of, uh, different roads that are completing a lot of striping. And you're, you're looking at probably a dollar a foot for, for thermoplastic striping.
Easily.
I'd agree with her.
And what I had before, it'd probably be twenty-five, three thousand dollars, so depends on where I add to it, pretty sure.
Would it be cheaper for us to just buy our own, striping, can get it right on and?
Not really, no.
Cause they're only like four or five thousand dollars for the striker, plus your painting.
We have one over there.
We, we have a walk behind now that's.
Nobody wants to use it, I've seen it sitting in there, but I've never ridden on a thing of it.
Is it like a little one you sell on and, or, yes, yeah, I'm, I'm learning to do that approved for the
Are ya?
Underfield and some painting, and other, machines are not that expensive, I mean, we just buy our own and that way, whatever needed them, we just go do it ourselves.
It, it's probably more cost efficient to just have the strike, uh, contract and help.
There's a guy that lives in Lex, which is suburbs of Cutler.
Okay.
He strikes parking lots, I don't know if he can do.
I, I could probably include him on the, the question list.
I'm thinking of them coming up with his name. I drive right to his house, like, I think that was me. And I've never seen his work, I just know that he does, does that work. Okay, uh, anything else to come from anybody for, for our highway department, any questions, any comments? Thank you.
Thanks.
I wanted to report that, uh, I attended the redevelopment meeting, and, uh, I didn't have a number to report to them as far as the cost of the, expected cost of the sewer water line run down through to, from the southwest corner of, uh, one hundred north of.
Yeah.
Yeah, one hundred north of thirty-nine, down to the side of the jail. I asked Alavas to give, give me that prospective number and I never got a thing from them, so, uh, the redevelopment board said that they really wanted to ask the person who had run all the water lines out there, who, comes to some of their meetings, engineer, to look at it and give them a cost on it, he's supposed to be at the next meeting. They're talking about putting, they said it'd take a six to eight inch line run down through there to accommodate the, uh, I think it's an eight inch would be the best for the jail and Carroll Manor, if they wanna make it out. The redevelopment commission says they'd like to put a twenty inch line down through there, now that'd be a lot of capacity more than. But they're looking to, you know, for a future to the south there, and, uh, think that that'd be a much wiser investment, and can't argue that at all. So anyway, that's moving along, we're supposed to get that, uh, somebody coming in and talking to us at the next meeting, just before our second meeting of May. And also talked to Curpsy concerning the ambulance garage and a potential building, a new one on the south side out here and getting a, a grant for that, an Okra grant, and we are too late to get it in for this, this time, it's just too close, they have to do income surveys and things like that, and what he, the gentleman from, uh, Curpsy said was that, uh, by it being, it's, it's a county garage, but it's, it's, and it's gonna be out in county property, but he thought it'd be possible for us to use, since it's on the edge of Delphi, to use Delphi's income surveys for applying for the, the Okra grant. And they already have all those numbers, so they wouldn't have to do a new income survey for that. It, it is good for up to five hundred thousand dollars, eighty percent match, they put up eighty, you put up twenty. Which is good. New garage. He was going to talk, he knows the, uh, Okra representative who would be taking that application, so he was going to be contacting him and finding out if it was okay if he's Delphi numbers. And he's gonna be talking, we're gonna follow it in next week again to continue the song. So we're looking, we're looking at that. And I thank you for bringing that up, too, because I didn't wanna let that get away. I think that's all I have to. Is there anything that anyone has out here to bring up, they'd like to address the commission, nice to have you here, Lee.
Mr. Sheriff?
Yes.
I would like to report on two items, one is the, um, the package sewage treatment plant for Fido.
Okay.
Communities. After last month's meeting, I contacted IDM and Department of Delph and eventually to IDM. And what, IDM verified the aspects that the plant can't be constructed closer to five hundred feet, and there's also issues with the, uh, both the force main into the plant, force mains into the plant and out, outlets from the plant are also regulated, the plant is regulated. However, IDM will not prospectively get involved in an issue, they said it is an issue of local building. Issue, it will not, uh, they don't, they don't go in and, and seek injunctive relief against development that may violate those regulations, that is a local building's orders. So that was confirmed by their legal counsel, I spoke with their attorney, with Homeland Security's attorney, and they confirmed that, I kind of went up through the chain of command on it, from the local, uh, the inspector that's been helping with the city inspection here locally, he's the first one, I think he actually did an inspection of it, there was, there's no report though, he came back a few days after that, doing that, and that was like, a day or two after our meeting. And told me that he was kicking it upstairs and he was, he reported to somebody, so I went up, hired Department of Delph and then over IDM, so it's, that's where that is, so they are not going to do anything in a city. The owner of the plant may have a right of action against, uh, the, uh, one or more parties possibly including the county, I don't know.
What was the last possibly?
Possibly including the county. Uh, for granting permit, if, if it's within the parameters of, of the Indiana administrative, so that, that's where that is right now, there's nothing further that the board commissioners can do. And I, I recommend courts of action, we don't put you already done, which was to request that the area plant tuition court go through the control, that's what we can do. Uh, another item is the, we're waiting for the second appraisal on the tribute car. We've done one appraisal and it's at two twenty-five, and that's the amount of the offer, so that's good. We can't exceed more than the average of two appraisals, so we're waiting for that second appraisal. And Beth has contacted this, the second appraiser by email, that we're having, getting questions, you know, from the Realtor that haven't had that second appraisal, we have not got that appraisal, it's due any time. I would say that Indiana code requires the, uh, purchasing agency in this case of the county to appoint in the request that they. By the report, we have, we already done, when you appoint appraisers in your purchasing property, in your local government entity, it says that the appraiser's supposed to have thirty days to do it, that is pretty, uh, small timeframe for commercial appraisals. Now, they both inspected the property at the same time, so their inspections are done. And, and I'm sure that the second appraiser's probably, he's got, he's got a lot on his plate, but, uh, so we should hear back from, I don't know, do you verdict back anything, Beth?
I haven't checked.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sending it now.
Yeah, so, uh, we should, we should, I, I expect that any time, so, well, that's where that is. As soon as we get that second appraisal, as long as it's two twenty-five or more, we're good to go on closing on that purchase of the property.
Or less?
Yes, two twenty-five or less.
Correct.
And, yeah, I just, it's, it's less, it's the average of the two, uh, so, it's less than our offer was made contingent upon